All right. Hey, welcome, everybody. It is noon here on the East Coast, and it is time for our Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I am Coach Ashley, and we are joined by our founder and creator, Greg Kilwin.
Hello, everyone. Glad you're here.
We're super excited to have you all here today. Go ahead, and if you're tuning in live, go ahead and come over to the chat. Let us know where you're coming in from. Today, we are going to be doing a follow-up on our in-depth training about using campaigns that we did last week. Some of you submitted questions, and a couple of you may be coming on to join us live today, and maybe share your screen, or we'll, you know, share a screen with your account on it, and so we can go over some of your campaign-specific questions. Of course, if you have any questions that you'd like to have us address today, you're more than welcome to ask those as well, and we'll do our best to answer all of them here live. Otherwise, of course, we'll get with you separately. Just a little bit of housekeeping. If you're brand-new, welcome. This is a weekly work session that's open to anyone who is in Young Living, not just those who are working with us in Get Oiling on the platform, although we certainly would love to have you. If you do not have your own complete system to build your business yet, you can go over to getoiling.com and get started with us for just a dollar for your first 30 days, and that includes an in-depth 30-day-in-your inbox step-by-step training on how to launch your business online to grow Young Living simply, easily, and all under one roof. So, we'd be happy to have you. Before we start launching into all of our questions and our content, we do want to go ahead, and for those of you who are brand-new, or who are maybe reoriented, or, you know, are reorienting, or are desiring to start over, or just try to figure this out in your first steps, we want to start off by showing you where your resources are and exactly where you can go. Of course, this is one of those resources, meeting here live on Thursdays at noon Eastern every Thursday. You have a couple of other options as well in your back office. Actually, Greg, are you able to share your, maybe a dashboard of an account, so we can point to exactly where folks can go?
Sure, let me get that queued up here.
Awesome. Hello, Michigan and New Hampshire. Happy to have you here.
Can you see the screen? Did I get the right one?
We got a straight line across the screen.
All right, that's not it. Let me drag it again here. Okay, I think this is the right one this time.
Yep.
No? Man, I'm having trouble today.
All right, I can swap out the share if you want.
Ah, man, what is going on? That's so weird. That's the one I'm picking here.
Okay.
It's not working. It's like the whole thing. I don't know. Weird.
Okay, I'm gonna log into a test account and do this, just in case that's maybe a Zoom issue or something like that. Okay. So you should be able to see my screen now, you guys. Can you see it okay? Greg? It seemed to have lost volume. If you guys are here, chat, let me know. You can see my screen pretty please.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, there you are.
Yes, I can see your screen. Yep.
Fantastic. All right, cool. So, awesome. This is gonna be a fun session, you guys. All right, so there's a couple of places that you need to know about when you're first getting started with us. Number one is when you first get started, of course, if you've just recently got started with us at basic or higher, you've got Destined for Diamond coming into your inbox right now, which is super helpful. However, another place that you can go to make sure that you're getting your bases covered, even if you want to just do a little bit day by day, step by step, is this little teal bar up here at the top of your dashboard screen, this little rocket guy here. This will walk you through the basics of getting your account set up. There are quick little videos or blurbs. Everything is very quick in terms of the amount of time it takes. This is 50 seconds, just as an example. I think the longest one is just a few minutes. Very easy and quick to set up your account if you just go through these steps. And of course, you can use your account without having gone through all of them. Of course, as you can see, in this test account, it's totally useful, but, you know, not every single thing is ticked. So, don't worry, you can still get things done without having that complete. Another place you can go, of course, is, oops, wrong one there, this Help button right here. And when you go to Help, you can actually see a number of different things, such as your Quick Reference Guide, and this is actually a downloadable PDF where you can actually see step-by-step. For those of you who like to print things out and follow along with them, you've got some step-by-step setup here, and then, of course, you've got Help videos that are specific to topics, and then you've got your 90-Day Challenge webinars, and these are in-depth marketing training, teaching you not just how to use the system, but the context in which you would successfully use these things. So I hope that that helps you for those of you getting started. And of course, you're always welcome here. Submit your questions ahead of time if you like. If you're not gonna be able to make it live, and we'll do our best to cover them. So, with all of that said, let's talk about campaigns. I want to see... There are a couple of emails that I got from you guys before we went live today, majority of whom would not be able to join us live. I want to go over a couple of questions that we received pretty quickly, because these are important for you to know. So the first question actually came from Carrie Mahan, and she asked if you can do a drip campaign via text. And the answer to that question is yes. And do you know if you got your share fixed, Greg? Or should I go ahead and do this?
I can try again here.
Okay.
I'm picking the window, I promise.
Lynn says, "I'm excited that I upgraded to include texting, so I'm very interested in learning more about that feature." Awesome. All right, yeah, we didn't go into texting a great deal in last week's training. However, everything that was taught last week is completely applicable to text. So what we'll do, just to show you the difference, is if we go under our Contact Manager menu here, and we go to Settings...
You're just seeing my window, right? Not the whole thing?
Yeah, yeah.
Perfect.
Just your windows, exactly what you wanted. All right, then you go to Campaigns. And you can see, there's lots of campaigns here. You can duplicate one if you have one that's set up for email and turn it into a text campaign if you wanted to, but let's just show you how to get started with a campaign, just for quick, you know, quick reference. You go down and you hit the Create Campaign button. You give it a name. You give the name that you would like to have show up as who is sending this. So if maybe this is, you know, Team Leader So-and-so, if it's related to that, right? Or if it's just your name, that's perfectly fine. Okay, so now we're getting into text options. If you want people to be able to opt into a campaign by a text, then you'll give the keyword right here. So they would text your Get Oiling number that you've selected when you set up your two-way texting, and then they would text keyword here, as Greg has typed, or whatever keyword you would like to use, to that number, and then they get onto this campaign. So what you're gonna want to do here is select the preferred sending medium as Text Only. You can do a campaign that's both. I highly recommend that you, basically, if you want to have functionality of both, I recommend that you just do one for email and one for text. That way, you can kind of, you can maximize the features, right? If you want to be quick about it, then absolutely, just pick to send both ways. But sometimes, people want to opt in, and they want to also give you their phone number, but maybe they don't necessarily want to receive texts. So I like to have that separate personally. All right, and then you can choose how quickly your texts go out. So if you want a drip campaign, that's gonna be the daily normal speed. So this is gonna be if you want them to receive one right away, and then maybe one day after tomorrow, and so on, you select Daily, or it would be Fast, right? So if you hit Minute, then it's like a minute in between, right? So if it's Day Zero, Day One, Day Two, Greg, how does that work?
Yeah, it's Minutes. So if you set it, well, on the next screen, you'll see the Days, but it turns Days into Minutes. So like, if you have a Day Zero, One, and Five, you get a text on, you know, right away, and then a minute later, and then five minutes later.
Yeah.
One other cool thing is you can actually stack these. Like, if you want an initial burst of emails over, or sorry, texts over minutes, you can set up the same keyword on multiple campaigns, and it'll activate them all when they text in. So you could do a per-minute one, and then have a drip one after that. So if you want to send them five texts right away, you know, over the course of an hour, and then drip on them after that, you can.
Oh, wow, that's awesome. I just learned something new. That's really cool. So you can actually choose to use the same keyword twice, if you wanted to do that. That's really, really cool. Awesome. Yeah, so then you hit Create Campaign, and then you start adding your messages. And maybe we can add like an existing message here if you wanted, which is a little more advanced, if you already have messages made, or you go in and you create one directly here.
Yeah, the most common one, I think, is to do the Write New Message. We actually changed up the screen based on some feedback recently, because this is a little confusing sometimes, like adding the existing message. Actually, if you edit it, it will edit it in all the campaigns that you have the message in. So that's just one little note that you have here. So writing a new message is probably the easiest thing to do, or the best thing.
Right. And so here you select your subject line, which, how does this work? So for text, Greg, there is a bit of a difference here, right? So if you have a huge body of an email, this isn't going to text completely. So you're going to have your text in the subject line or down underneath, right?
Yeah, if it's a text-only campaign, you could just put it in the subject. This box down here is if you're interested in, if you make a campaign that's both for email and text. So there's actually a few different ways that it works. I can explain that here. So if you just, since most campaigns are email, most people do that, you know, they'll have their Welcome and Thank You. Hey, look at that. And then you have your message body. You could do whatever. This is, again, this is by email. This is one option, email message here. I'll just clarify that. In this case, if you'd send this out by text, now they're gonna get a text that says Welcome and Thank You, and then there'll be a little link that takes them to a page that shows this email message here. However, you can just leave this message body blank, and then your subject line becomes your text. If you want to do the combination, you can. If I put this back in here, then you can put something else here, and say this is the text message. So for just a text campaign, the simplest thing you can put in the subject, leave the rest blank. Otherwise, if you want to have both email and text in one campaign, you can do that by specifying different, so yeah, this top part is for email, and this bottom part is for text.
Awesome. And then if you scroll down just a bit, if you're sending this as a text campaign, instead of putting those images in the body like you would with an email, you would select the image and put that here. So then this would send as a multimedia message. This would be an image and the text that you've selected that you've put in that subject line. Awesome. And also, along the lines of something that Carrie had asked, she had said that she had gotten some feedbacks, some feedback about her campaigns, and I believe that these would be email, of course, because the formatting isn't, you know, whether or not something shows up on your phone has to do more with the user's phone than you, the Get Oiling member. So if we could go and maybe pull up an email campaign and show folks how they can test their campaigns by sending them to themselves, so that they can, in their own inbox, look and see, okay, how is the formatting? Does this image show up correctly? Does that link work correctly? I want to double-check this before I start sending this to people.
Absolutely. So here's a campaign, just to show you. Here's one that we copied. There's a built-in one called New Prospects Campaign. I made a copy of it in this test account, and so I'll just like click here, and you can see the messages that are in there. So to add it to a contact, I'll go over here. I'll put my name in here. And send it to me. So like if I, yeah, so I'll just, what I can do here, I'll just add it to the one contact. Click on my contact name. There's multiple ways to add contact, or sorry, campaigns. On this contact page, I will just come down here, click Add on Campaigns, and find my copy of New Prospects Campaign right here, and hit Add, and then that would start sending. So you do, one note is if you have imported your contacts from the Young Living Virtual Office, you'll automatically get a contact for yourself. That's kind of a cool thing that they provide. It's right in the file, so you don't even have to add it, add yourself in there if you've imported. And just a quick reminder, the importing is under Contact Settings, and then Import. There's a button there, and it's got some instructions for you on how to import the file, how to get the file from Young Living, and then put it in here. And you can update or refresh your contacts as many times as you want to. But yeah, definitely, once you've got that in there, go find yourself in your Contact Manager, scroll down, hit Add on Campaigns, and then you'll get that. Then you can test it out. If you want to, you can, you know, before you set up the campaign, let's say you want it spread out over 30 days or something, you could put them all to send, you know, much shorter than you would normally before you actually...
Send a Minute Campaign.
Yeah, yeah. Those send by text, but it's basically, I mean, you get an idea of what it would look like then.
Gotcha. Oh, so with email, you don't, the Minute Campaign doesn't work. You would just need to set everything to like Day Zero. If you wanted to say, test, if you had 30 messages in your campaign, and you want to look at all of them in your email today to just verify that they're set up the way that you want them to, you would just set all of those to Day Zero, right, so that they send right away. And then, once you're happy with it, then you go in and you put them, you know, in the order that you want them to be.
Right. Yep. Because you can add a campaign as a fast text campaign, but it will send it by text as well, or just text, I should say, so.
Can we go and show how you might edit the weight of the text, or the size of the text in the email campaigns that you send? Because that could play into if folks are having a hard time reading the lettering and stuff inside your campaigns. You can actually edit the text and the formatting right here.
Yeah. So and the size of the font kind of depends on the phone, you know. So if you want to, I'm just gonna select it all here, but there's a little font size selector, and it looks like it's 14, whatever that is. Pump it up to 18, it'll make it bigger. I mean, you can go even bigger if you want to.
And you can make it bold as well, right?
Yep, you could.
If you wanted.
Yep. I actually use the keyboard shortcut, but there's a button up here for Bold. You got italic, underline. You can do all sorts of things. Colors too. If you, you know, if you have a specific color that you like, you can come in here. There's a bunch of colors to choose from. You can even highlight. I think there's a background color option here too.
Yep.
I could make it yellow. I think that's yellow. Yep.
Awesome. So while we're here, and we actually have a campaign that's up right now that we're looking at, Donna asked whether or not, once you have a campaign up, so let's just say that you have a campaign up and it's live, people have opted into it, can it be updated? Can it be changed after this campaign is live?
Yes, it can. So I just edited this one, and I had added it to the camp, or to, this campaign was added to that contact a few minutes ago. So yeah, the way it works is this. Let me go back to the list of messages. You can edit any message anytime. Messages that haven't been sent, those will be affected by your change, but if somebody's already gotten an email from you, unfortunately, you can't go back and change that. But, you know, messages that haven't been sent, you can also, you can edit those at any time. There's one consideration here with changing the days. So let's say somebody is on Day, it's, because the campaign message is sent out in the afternoon sometime. So if somebody is on Day Six already, and they're supposed to get the email, let's say, tonight, and you go and you change this to Day Five, it's gonna skip them tonight. They're not gonna get that one. So you gotta be a little careful when you're changing the days. You know, maybe there'll be some people that, it's probably best to, you know, leave them if you have a lot of people on there, but if you just started out, you can, you can play with the days. And it's probably no big deal if there's one that's missing. You could always like manually send that to them as well. If you're like, hey, I know you missed this one, so I'm gonna send it. But yeah, just have to be a little careful when editing the days. We can edit the messages whenever you want to. Those are totally fine. You can add messages. You can remove messages. But again, anything that's been sent hasn't been changed, or can't be changed.
Right. So if you had a campaign, for instance, that was maybe covering the components of a Premium Starter Kit, so maybe somebody just bought their kit, and you want to get them excited, and keep them excited up to when they receive their kit, so that they're ready to hit the ground running and excited to share, right? So sometimes, the lineup of oils, for instance, will change a little bit, or just, you know, the details of the Premium Starter Kit will shift from time to time. This is a perfect example. If you are explaining the PSK in your, in a campaign, then you will want to go back and update. But just if it's sent out to someone already, you can't fix that. But if you want to send an update, then that's something that you may want to just do separately, and then, of course, have that in the campaign for future opt-ins. And actually, along those lines, we got a cool question from Diane, who I don't know if she's on today. I think she said her assistant might be. So if you are here, I didn't catch your name. Definitely raise your hand and let me know that that's you, and we'd love to have you come out if you want to maybe work together on getting a campaign started. And specifically, what Diane said was that she's interested in having a campaign for each starter kit, and that she sells a lot of the Ningxia Red, the kit around that. And so she would want to have a campaign related to that. Didn't quite get into the details as to whether that's something you want to have beforehand to sell it, or if it's something that you want to have after they bought it to educate them further. But another thing that she had mentioned as well was to have additional information and supplement information related to health, wellness, weight loss, and so on, that can be included, because you always want to be educating people, not just on the products that they've received, but on the products that they may be very interested in if they bought a particular line, right? So if someone bought makeup, then you're obviously gonna want to recommend skincare, right? You know, or if somebody got Ningxia Red, then there may be some supplements that you want to include as well. So the way that I would recommend doing this, and you actually, oh, so we have a new Members Campaign that's already in here. Everybody has access to this.
Correct. There's one for each country. Yeah, these are some nice templates too. You could, you know, copy and paste this one into your own template if you want the image on the side, and just replace the image.
Yep, absolutely. So definitely go in. If you guys haven't looked at it yet, send this campaign to yourself. Have a look at it, and then start thinking about how you can maybe get it into your own voice, and then maybe if there are other products that you would be interested in adding on here. And, oh, out of curiosity, Greg, so for this preloaded campaign that we have here, where we are pointing off to, in this case, Household Cleaner or a particular oil, does that have that magic tag on the end of the link?
These do not, because they're existing members. So it's more for new prospects. You could do that.
Gotcha.
I think there's, yeah, there's a way. It's that, I can show you how to do it here, but yeah, it's sponsor ID equals, and then you could put in your number directly if you want to, or if you want it to be dynamic, I think it's just called Member underscore Number in brackets like that, and then you have to do the same thing with it.
So if you wanted to duplicate this campaign and to maybe get this to prospects, to share more about the scope of what you have to offer with your Young Living products, that's actually something that you can do. So that if they want to go off and learn about these laundry soap, and they're like, oh, my God, this is so much better than Tide. I want to try that now, then it's automatically gonna go to your signup page, asking them to get their Premium Starter Kit, telling them that Essential Rewards is the way to go, and so on. Cool. So there's actually a couple of uses for this. And can we show them really quickly how you copy a campaign, whether it's one that we have in there for you, or one that you've already created?
Absolutely. So under Contact Settings, Campaigns, yeah, again, it doesn't really matter whether it's created by you or by, there's a built-in, it'll show like on here in Page Two, there'll be these built-in ones, but they all have this little stack sheets of paper icon. So all you have to do is click on that. Let me find the USA New Members, and I'll just say, My New USA New Members. Hit Okay, and then it should alphabetize it then, wherever that is. Yeah, so right here, now there's the copy of it, and then you're free to go in and edit it as you pleased. So it's a great way to just make a copy, and, you know, especially it preserves the formatting. I guess that's probably not the right email there, but I think some of these have some formatting in there with some pictures. Yeah, like this one has this nice, the Wolfberry, Goji Berry over there, and some pictures here, just, you know, pointing to videos. And yeah, so nice formats to copy, for sure.
Fantastic. Yes. So for those of you who are interested in creating a campaign that's maybe a particular, like a campaign for each starter kit, there are actually emails that are already in here that are pre-formatted with great images and links and everything already there. So feel free to, you know, to copy what's here and to use it to your advantage, or at least use it for inspiration. And of course, if you want to change the Send on Day to Zero, so you can see what they look like in your inbox, you can test them out that way. And when you do that, by the way, you do need to click off of it, right? So you have to click off of the field. So if we go and change this one to, from two to zero, you need to actually click off of that box for it to load itself up, just a little thing there. All right, cool. So I believe that's all of the questions about campaigns specifically that I received ahead of time. If you are here live, and you have any campaign questions, or if you have a campaign that you have already started working on, that you would like some help with live, raise your hand. And we'd love to bring you out, and we can talk about how to make your campaigns better, or help you if you're stuck, or whatever. Oh, we got a hand. All right. All right, Lynn, bringing you out. Welcome.
Hey, Lynn.
Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can.
Great. I'm doing a campaign for next week, an expo, an animal expo, and I have eight emails going out, and I would love you to take a look at them, because I don't feel very comfortable with them.
Okay, cool. Let's see. Can we...
Do you want to share, or should I?
Yeah, let me, let me log into the right account, so I could bring that up for you, Lynn. Now, you said this is for an expo, so it's specific to an upcoming event?
Yes. Yes, an animal wellness event.
Okay. Awesome. And do you have that under your Campaigns already loaded up?
It should be under Animal Wellness.
Okay. Hold on just a second. I gotta bring you up here. All right, perfect. Make sure I get to the right page before I start sharing my screen here. Okay, great. I'm gonna share. Okay, so it's this one, Animal Wellness?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. All right, so we've got Welcome, Animals Are Different, Learn How, Applied Zoom of What? Awesome. That's a great opener here. That's, can, or can you pronounce this? Quality, 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 Fabulous Five, Animal Sense, and Supplements for Animals. Awesome. All right. So before we start breaking this down, that is such a cute image. Lynn, what is your goal with this campaign?
It's a two-day seminar, or excuse me, expo for animals, Love Your Pet Expo. So my goal is to bring people, of course, into relationship with me and to also educate them. So I will be doing some, at the actual expo, I will be doing some demonstrations on First Aid and how the, you know, basic First Aid, and then I will integrate essential oils into the First Aid Kit. So it's basically prospects.
Okay. And so do you intend to get people onto this campaign from the event, or are you using this campaign to promote the event?
This is actually, I haven't set up a landing page yet, but this is for them to sign up during the event, that they will receive the introduction, Welcome to Animal Wellness, and then they will receive eight more emails after that, just introducing them to different types of animal wellness.
Okay.
Young Living.
Awesome. Okay, so if you were to say, when you're standing at the table at this event, what is the big benefit that someone is going to get from signing up to get this information? It's the compelling thing that, you know, if you were in their shoes, would make them want to say, yes, I'm gonna give you my contact information, and I want you to market to me?
Well, the information that I'm focusing on is preventative medicine as well as preparedness. We had a lot of fires out here last year, and people just weren't prepared with like a First Aid Kit for the animals. So this is where I'm trying to get the message that we need to be prepared. And so the giveaway is within the campaign, about four in, I have what's called the Fabulous Five, and that's the five oils that you need for your animals. And in that part, they can sign up for a class, which would be a First Aid Class for Animals, to learn, you know, more extensively how to prepare for their animal's wellness in case of an emergency. So I just haven't got it tightened up yet, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Okay, okay. So what I would say, just from a high-level strategy perspective, is that you want, when, especially when you're at an event like that, it's an expo, there's gonna be lots of different vendors, lots of, you know, just a whole lot of information. It's kind of like being on Facebook to a degree. It's a little more, you know, a little more pointed in terms of, you know, people's interests and expectations, but it's still a very distracting space. And so my recommendation would be that if they opt in, then they get access to this class And so my recommendation would be that if they opt in, then they get access to this class that teaches them this thing that's very important to them. And, and that the way that you deliver that to them, when you're specifically talking about why they should get onto this campaign at the event, it needs to, to be quick and to that point, right? So you mentioned, you mentioned a first aid class. Is that something they get invited to after they're in the campaign?
Yes, and that would be through the fabulous five. So at the actual expo, I will be doing some demonstrations on what you need for CPR, what you need to know for pressure points for bleeding. And then how to get your animals already adapted to essential oil so that they actually can help them when they're in a state in emergency. So those things I will be already demonstrating and I have, I sent that out. An invitation to people I've already met through the animal expo. This is the third year I've been there. I'm explaining kind of the schedule that we will have during the expo. Does that make sense?
So you're, you're gonna, you're gonna be a speaker at the expo during a particular period of time, right?
Actually, we, we will be on the bottom of the hour, excuse me, doing some demonstrations with those topics.
Awesome.
That will be actually at the booth.
Okay. So what I would then say is, and you don't necessarily have to change the content of what you're teaching here. I think that as, as a body of work, it's something that, I mean, this is what you're going to share anyway. But what you want to make sure that you do in order for a campaign to be successful, for you to get people to not only say, yes, I want to give you my info so that I can get on to this campaign, but also that I'm ready to take action on what you are going to tell me to do inside of it, or what you're going to share with me. Is that it needs to be really immediately compelling toward a specific end. So we could say, you know, when you sign up for my campaign, you'll get my, you know, five step guide to end game, right? So this could be, you know, to a healthy, well, I mean, if this is about preparedness, right? You know, so the five things you need to do right now to make sure that you're prepared to care for your pet in the face of the, you know, of a disaster, right? Like that's, that feels a little, I mean, I know I'm, this isn't my, my wheelhouse, it's yours. But if we can come up with some kind of language around that, so that people go, oh yeah, I need that, right? That's going to help you a great deal. And then what you'll want to do is in the way that you structure the information you've got here. You're going to obviously want to break it down in those ways, you know, so in the first on day zero, you're going to say, you know, over the next, you know, week, I'm going to share with you this many things and I'm going to break it down this way. And here's what you can expect. And if you want to go ahead and get a head start and get the products that you'll need to follow my recommendations, here's where you can go. Right? Let's see. And you do set those expectations here in the first campaign. It's just that we want to, we want to have a very loud and clear tie to the end game that someone is looking for, right? So it could be that this is, you know, my five step guide to affordable animal wellness, right? Or eight step, or however you want to put that together. But, but we want to go more narrow than the general just animal wellness. Does that make sense?
Correct. Great. That's, that's what I need. Okay, tighten it up. Okay.
Uh huh. Yeah, yeah. And really, so just, you just put, imagine who these people are who are going to be showing up and, you know, what is the gap? What's, what's, what's the gap between the two of you in terms of what you know and what they know and maybe what they're looking to get? Because you're obviously intimately familiar, being a veterinarian, you, you're intimately familiar with lots of things that they aren't. You obviously hold a great deal of credibility walking in the door, but you still need to meet them where they are with your language. Does that make sense?
Okay. Yes, exactly.
Awesome. And, and continue along these lines here, right? Actually, and this is good too, animals are different, learn how, you know, using something like, like this, I mean, I zoopharmacognosy, like this is great. And, and again, just tying back to what are they looking for? You know, what's, what are the problems they're facing? And, and tailor, you know, your opening statements and the way that you deliver the language to help them solve a problem. And that's going to keep them engaged and that's going to make them even more open to clicking that link and buying that thing that you say that they should buy, right?
Okay, yes, got it.
Awesome. Do you have any other questions?
I do. And, and this is, this is in the part of the strategy that I'm trying to understand is yeah, how do I, I have actually two questions. One is, is within the campaign, to get them to, say, for example, to take a class. So what, so what I have at the actual event, I will have some, some PDFs that, that when they join the campaign that, which I haven't set up yet, that first welcoming will have, you know, a PDF, say, for example, of CPR, emergency CPR. So they'll get some PDFs automatically by coming into giving me their name and number and I'll let them know about the campaign. Then within the campaign, I have two classes. One is on first aid, which is just basic first aid. And the second one is, which I have still developed is and I don't know if I'm mixing the campaign up again, so maybe I should just do two. Because one is on first aid and animal preparedness, but the other one is overall general animal wellness. So am I mixed, should I just focus on one thing? Is that?
So, so here's, from an, from an overall strategic perspective, where you have multiple, where you have multiple topics that deserve their own sort of in-depth explanation, right? So if we're talking about, what were the examples that you gave? One was about CPR and the other was a first aid kit?
Correct.
Those need to be separate campaigns. And the reason why is that because these are concept centric, they're going to have a broader application than just this event. This is something that you can link off to in your newsletters. This is something that you can have at the bottom of a business card. This is something you could have a text code at your office that says, you know, text this, you know, to, to get, you know, my five step CPR guide, right? And by the way, that PDF that you're giving away, that's enough, that's compelling enough to say, you know, I have, and you'll want to tailor the language, obviously, but to say, you know, you're going to get my free, you know, pet CPR guide. And all you have to do is do this. So however they would opt into your campaign, that's enough, that's compelling enough. Right? That's an immediate thing. And then of course they get it right away and they're on your list. Now you can have multiple classes and put those in campaigns. It can be text, it can be email. And then where we're talking about general animal wellness, you can just do a, a regular newsletter once a week, once a month, where you just focus on general wellness and, and send that to your entire list. And so you would create that newsletter. Actually, over here, under saved replies. And so animal wellness, oh, look, I think you already did it. You followed the directions from last week. Awesome. So this can be the start of a newsletter for you. So, you know, so you could certainly have components of what you've put together in this campaign. You know, inside of multiple class campaigns, right? Where you have, you know, where you're talking about CPR, oh, but did you know, there's also, you know, did you know that diffusing in the home helps with dogs that have respiratory issues or, you know, like there's, there's a lot that you could do with those. But you want to go as narrow interest specific as possible per campaign, or in this case, you know, for calling a campaign a class, per class. Because these are assets that you can continue to put to use in your business. And so, you know, let's just say, for instance, somebody signs up because they want the PDF on CPR, you can let them know that you also offer a free class where they can receive in their email, you know, the, the five steps to, you know, whatever the outcome is. And then they can opt in right there. You know, you can send them, if it's a text campaign, you could just say, text this to me now and you'll get that class too. And so now they're on that campaign as well. Does that make sense?
Exactly. And that was my second question is with, because my understanding, except in learning marketing, which I've never done before, is, is to continue inviting them into something more. And so the question is where within the original campaign would they, I invite them into, say, for example, another campaign, another, for example, email, you know, list of, instead of just a class, but also signup for newsletter or, see, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what, how to engage them and what that looks like for them.
Sure, sure. Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's going to depend. You know, it could be that, you know, it could just be an, oh, by the way, I also have a class on this. When maybe you touch on a particular concept in one class. But if your campaign is set up to educate and push toward a decision, I would have the, the invitation to join another class or campaign to come after you have made your call to action in the first campaign, right? Because you don't want to kind of, like, when you're, you're, you're trying to narrow the view, right? So where people are like, okay, I'm moving closer to this decision. And, and you don't want to give them one over here to move off to when you want them to go right here.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. That helps me.
Awesome. Do you have any other questions for me?
Not today.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for coming out and joining us. And all right, do we have anyone else who'd like to come out and ask questions? Greg, did we have any while we were in there?
I didn't see anybody. Just a question from Jack here about the, that dynamic field for the member number. I did put the reply in the chat, but the question was if we use that dynamic field for the member number? Okay, so let's say that again. So if we use the dynamic field for member number, it would put in the member number of the new member that is receiving the email? And the answer is no, it puts in your member number. So it's not going to, not for the recipient, it's for you. That's what that tag does, that bracket members, member number tag.
Awesome.
And is there anyone, anyone else who wanted to come on live here though?
All right. Yeah. Last call for that and we'll start going into more general Q and A and some of the questions that we, we received ahead of time for the call today. If you have been working on campaigns or you have any questions, if you're stumped, definitely come out and let us know. I'm actually checking right now to see if I've got any other emails from this morning and I don't. Okay, all of you guys are doing fantastically well with your campaigns. Okay. We're here for you. All right. So I'll go on to now some of the questions that were submitted ahead of time that aren't necessarily campaign specific. And actually, wait a minute, Donna, are you here, Donna? I know you said that you might be. Yep, there you are. Hey, Donna, are you cool with coming out to talk? Because some of this, actually this particular question about using leg builder links, this was yours and we'd love to be able to give you the perfect context. All right. I'm gonna bring you out. Hello. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Hey Donna.
Hi.
All right. So Donna had a question about when you have team members who you have built a leg builder link for inside of GetOiling, what to do with them when they get their own GetOiling account, right? And I think you had some more clarifications around that, Donna.
Yeah, I was just, once I get a team member, hopefully they'll join GetOiling eventually, but some of my team members are just starting. How do I take them off once they get their own site? I guess was one question. And the second part of that is, I know they're sharing my site. But do they have a way of having their own theme? Or when they're sharing my site, it's my theme that's on there? And the reason why I'm asking that is some of my team has very young kids. I don't. So I just wanted them to have a theme that would better relate to the people that they are speaking to.
Right.
Absolutely. I can share up my screen here and show you how that answered both of your questions actually at the same time here. So leg builder links down here. And for those of you who might not know, leg builder links are a way to give a link to someone on your team, a, a business builder typically. And if they visit it, the Young Living member number that's supplied when they click place an order will be for that team member of yours and not you. While your main website remains having your own number. So it's a great way to give new builders a little boost. So to access that, that's under leg builder links in the leg bit, like, yeah, the leg builder menu, there's some explanation down here too as well, if you want to read about that a little bit more in depth. But what I'm going to do here is I'll create a new one. Well, actually, to answer your first question, what do you do when they're done? If they've got their own GetOiling site, they'll likely want to start sharing that instead of the link that you gave them. So you can just come in here and say, let's edit it. I'll edit one of these existing ones. And then there's a delete link button down here and then it would just that, and then I will get rid of it. And then if you're on one of the plans that has a limited number of leg builder links, that'll free up a slot for another leg builder link. Or you can just change it. You could, I think you can edit everything. So if you had a new person that wanted to replace them, you could just come here and change this entire screen. And then you'll be off and running. So you could either delete it or edit it and replace with somebody else.
Okay.
For your other question about the website theme, you can see here when you're creating a leg builder link, and this is the same creating as it is editing, this, the screen is the same. Down here, you can choose your website theme. And it depends on the country, you know, first you choose the country and then you can choose the theme because some of the themes aren't available in all of the countries. The USA has all of them, but, so let's say you were talking about kids. So if you want them to have the kids theme, you can certainly do that. And then you can even pair it with another landing page too. So you don't have to have the same landing page as your website. You can pair it up with the, I think there, can't remember, there's someone here about family. Yeah, like maybe this one. Or create your own if you wanted to, or makeup or whatever. You could, you could pair those together to make sure that makes sense. But yeah, those can be different than they can on your website. Now, one, one key thing is like, when you use a leg builder link, it's going to, the lead goes into your contact manager, but it will tell you in the email, getting one GetOiling sends you an email, it will say that this comes from a specific leg builder link. So you can send that back to them. And that's kind of the advantage of them having their own site at that point. Then they get to cap, you know, they get to, the leads go right into their contact manager instead of you having to forward them on. So does that answer your questions?
Yes, it does. That is awesome.
And the other thing to keep in mind as well, when you're using the legs older links is that the, my story and photo and the information that you've put up to customize your site is going to show up if you have that selected to show on those pages with, with those like builder links. So it's definitely, it's an easy temporary solution. But when somebody actually really is ready to start taking business seriously and growing, then they can, they, they need to get an account and they can get started with us for a dollar. And, you know, and of course all of the training is here, so you don't have to do it. And they can tune into these calls as well. So, so we definitely, yeah, as you, as you have people getting more serious, you definitely want them to get their account. All right.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. I know you had another question about Zoom meetings and I want to get to that, but Lynn had a question. She, she asked, can you tag the leg builder so that the tag will show the leg builder's contact? It's a good question.
I guess I don't quite follow.
So, so if people, okay, so, so when, when you have a leg builder link, maybe with a landing page on the front of it, like you just showed, you have the option of, of setting up, right? If your team member shares that and a lead registers on that landing page, would they, like, would it tag in the content, in the contact manager that this is that, maybe that team member's lead?
Yeah, it follows the landing page tagging. So on any of these landing pages, when you're setting those up, let me go out of here. I'll just pick any one of these like this one. And when you're setting that up under settings, you can add the tags. So if you wanted to tag them as whatever, whatever tag you want to, you can put there, there. And then, so yeah, if they register there, then they'll be tagged. That's actually a really great way of organizing them. I just never thought of that. It's an awesome idea.
Yeah. So, so make a landing page for your teammate and tag, like put their name in the tag area, right? And you could even have, I mean, if you wanted to do this, I mean, at this point, when you're doing this much work for your teammate, are you building their business or are they? But you could also maybe have a campaign and so on that helps to do that. If you really, if you wanted to help somebody, maybe they're just getting started, they're not ready to make a commitment to tools, but, but they, but they want to get moving and you want to help them. Totally been there, totally get it. I was, I was scrappy and broke when I got started, man. I would have loved to have something like that available to me. But yeah, that's, that's definitely an option. So glad we got that clarified. All right. So moving on. Donna, you had a question about using Zoom leading, Zoom meetings specifically for events and how maybe you go about sharing the link and when, is that right?
Yes.
I, I, maybe phrase it in, in your way.
Well, I did watch one of the videos and, or one of the meeting, I don't know which it was that I got it from, that I know that you can add the Zoom meeting in the link, but I was wondering how to do that. And then part two would be, okay, I come up to my meeting date of April 5th. And how do I find my Zoom link that I created for the people who are going to attend? I'm not checking also.
Okay. So you are going to have an online, a, a Zoom based event on April 5th? Okay, cool. Cool, cool. All right. Uh, so we could definitely show you how to do that and some of the best ways that you can use the system to your advantage. Uh, Debbie Cottrell asked regarding the last question, the, the last thing we were talking about, uh, if you can do the same in a kiosk. So if you wanted to have a Leg Builder link set up in kiosk mode, the answer is yes. All right. And that's if you, uh, click that little, you see where it's this kiosk mode right there.
Yep, next to the landing page.
All right, great. So, uh, so what we do, and, and I actually, um, I think I sent a workflow over to you when you asked this question because I wasn't sure if we'd have time to get to this today. Um, but when you are setting up an online event, um, or really when you're setting up anything, right? If you're setting up a funnel, um, in our system, you want to start with your campaign. Um, just because you're going to need to use it at different stages, right? And, and we don't need to necessarily walk through this. And when you're setting up a campaign for a future event, really all you have to do is have one message that is a confirmation. Hey, you've signed up. So glad you're going to be there. Uh, here is, uh, here are the details, including that Zoom link, right? You'll have to, you'll go back and do that, um, and add it in after you create it. Uh, but then, uh, and that, that's basically it. That way you know that when everybody signs up, they're getting the exact same information. Every other message that you send to them is going to be related to getting closer to the start date, right? Because campaigns will release according to when somebody opted in. Um, but you'll be sending out information irrespective of that. So you start with that. So you've got that. And then the next thing you want to do is create your Zoom link. And so you just go to your, your Zoom meetings link here under video conferencing. And you create a, a meeting with all of your details. So this would be the name of your event coming up in April. You give it a time and a date. All right. Uh, you can choose whether or not the participants have their video. If you're going to do this webinar style, I would make the video on for you if you want it, but definitely not for the participants. Uh, choose the duration. You're not, you're not limited to this. If you choose 30 minutes and you go two hours, it's still going to be that. This is just for setting expectations, uh, but go ahead and, and select what you want. Um, great. Um, I would not allow attendees to join before the host. I would only do that if you're having, uh, you know, kind of loose form team meeting. Um, all right, cool. And so then you hit create meeting. All right. Now the page that we're on right now is the same one that we came to when we clicked Zoom meetings. And so you'll copy that to your clipboard to be able to put it into that campaign that I told you about. Um, but when it's time for you to start the meeting, all you have to do is click start meeting. So at that time, so this is April 9th at 2:25 AM, you could just hit start meeting at that time. Um, but what you'll want to do next to get all of this humming together and, and have it organized is now you're going to go, uh, you're going to scroll down, uh, your menu over here to create under events. And you're going to create an event. This is your event in April. All right. So there it is. Um, and here's where you just put the, the details about the event. So this is actually, if you can imagine, if you were creating a Facebook event page or an Eventbrite, uh, event page, that's the kind of information you want to put here. You use descriptions, you use images. You know, you talk about what you're going to cover, all of that kind of stuff. Um, and actually, um, you don't even necessarily, because you, you want people to RSVP. Um, I wouldn't, uh, I wouldn't actually necessarily put that link on, on this page. I would put that in the message that you send out to people, right? Because what you want is for them to take action and RSVP. Because when they do that, then you've got this really cool thing that you can do in the events manager. So we'll just pretend that you've got the descriptions and the pictures here. You put your start, uh, and end time, featured image. And, uh, you know, just basically make, make it pretty, um, just like you would in any other, uh, setting. So, you know, Facebook or Eventbrite and so on. Okay. And you let people register themselves. Uh, and then you use, you use that campaign that we've theoretically created at this point, right? And that's the one that's going to deliver that Zoom link. Okay? So registered, then they're going to get that link. And then of course you can schedule, um, an email to go out five minutes before. And we'll show you how to do that here in just a second. So we go ahead and hit create event. And then now we are on the events page. Now, if you wanted to access this later, if you go, if you go scroll down, um, scroll down the page a little bit, under events, you see manage. There we go.
Okay.
And, and so now your event is here with any other events that you've created. And when we click it, um, and so you can actually see how many people are signed up and so on. Uh, but here now, when you've got, um, you've got people who have RSVP'd, um, then under actions, you can actually select those people and you can message them. So this is where, you know, maybe five minutes before, or the day before, or even after, if you want to send a recording, um, you can reach out to them here. So including that Zoom link, I would put that in the confirmation email for the event. And then I would also, um, schedule or just remember to set a reminder for yourself to send that link, you know, 15 minutes or however long prior to that live event.
Okay, great. Yes, it does.
Awesome. Um, and there's, um, there's a bit more you can do with this as well. You can invite people directly by clicking the button. If you want to invite people who are already in your contact manager. So if you wanted to do an event for your team, you could obviously invite your team this way. And then on, there he is. All right. So then you invite selected. And it'll actually customize the, uh, invitation. And you can schedule this as well. See where you have messages inside of our system, you can actually schedule. So obviously campaigns will send when people have registered and, you know, how many days out from there. But this is how you can make sure that you've got everything set up. So you don't have to think about it. You don't have to worry about, uh, you know, having, uh, or not sending a reminder ahead of time. And then of course you can share your event from right here as well and view it. You can see what it looks like. There you go. Okay. So we've got, um, do you have any questions, Donna, uh, from what we've covered here?
No, I think that covers everything that I had questions for, at least up until this point. I'm sure I'll come up with more.
Okay, awesome. Well, feel free, send them our way and we're happy to cover, uh, any of that on, on future sessions. Thank you so much for coming out and chatting with us.
Thanks.
Oh, sorry, cut you off. Welcome and thank you. All right. Uh, so we got a couple of questions here. Um, Lynn is asking for the workflow. Tell you what, I'm going to, um, when I send out the recording, I will send that out as well, since we talked about that today. Um, since I already have that written up and everything. Um, however, we do have, um, I know one weekly work session video and a 90 day challenge video that goes over this, uh, strategy in depth, uh, as well. If you want to really dig into those things. But you know, quick reference workflows are really helpful. Wendy asked, is two hours the longest amount of time, uh, for a Zoom? I mean, it is the longest amount that you can select, but I mean, you could theoretically, you can go on for a really long time.
Yeah, it doesn't cut you off after two hours by any means. That's just, all it does really is affect the calendar invitation. Um, actually it's not here, but over here under Zoom meetings, I think there's a, a way to view the calendar invite. Like if I go click on this new one I made, there should be, yeah, like this. That's really all it affects. So this will be a 45 minute calendar invite.
Okay. Yeah. So it's more about setting expectations. Okay. Uh, can anyone tell me which Thursday training contains kiosk landing pages? I need to set this up for an expo next week. I believe that's the events. Um, that's the trade, like, what was it? Uh, the vendor events. There is a vendor events, uh, weekly webinar that is, uh, at youtube.com forward slash GetOiling. You can find that there. We have our own YouTube URL now. All right. Uh, let's see. Wendy says my Zoom has a 10 person max. Uh, can I or should I, uh, put a limit on the number of RSVPs? That is definitely something that you could do. Um, and if actually, if, if you've got a fairly small maximum, uh, number of, of seats, then you should use that to your advantage in how you talk about the event. Say seats are extremely limited, you're going to want to make sure that you RSVP. Uh, and then, you know, I would, as a general practice, um, hmm, well, no, I mean, you, you, you want to, I was going to say, maybe allow a little more people to say yes than you have seats. Because typically people will RSVP obviously for something online and forget, or something comes up or whatever, and you want to max that out, but you also don't want to find yourself in a, in a position where, you know, 12 people absolutely want to come and 12 people can't get a seat. So, um, so yeah, but play that up if you want to. And of course, you know, when you're ready, you can upgrade. And we do have plans that have, uh, much more than 10 Zoom seats. All right. Jackie, hello. She's asking, uh, when you're creating a campaign message and there is a box offering how to send it, email only, text only, email and text, please explain if email and text is chosen, will it automatically send to them both ways? Or does it only send a text if they text an opt-in keyword? For, uh, okay, so we'll show you what she's talking about. Um, the answer is yes, it will send to both if both, uh, their email and their phone number are in the system.
Yeah, there's a combination setting here. I can show you. So like, uh, just to show you the, uh, setting that Jackie is talking about here. So I'll just click on this one here. And under edit campaign details, I showed this earlier, but there's this preferred sending medium. Uh, now that also there's a per contact setting on this as well. So like if I go over here to this contact and I edit them, there's a setting for how they receive campaigns, email or text. So this is what, you know, if they're not selected to receive a text campaign, they would only, in this case, this person would only get email campaigns. That, that setting, the preferred setting, sending medium works if they have both selected. And usually that happens if somebody opts into a landing page and they give you both an email address and a phone number, it will set both of these to be on. And then that's when this setting kicks in and, uh, then you can limit it to one. So you're not blasting in both ways.
Yeah. And I definitely recommend sort of, you know, professionally as, as a practice to, to, to keep them separate, uh, especially as your list gets bigger and you've got a greater amount of information. Because what you don't want is for people to feel like they need to opt out, right? If they feel like they're getting too much, they're going to be like, okay, maybe I don't want to hear from you. And that's not what you want. You want people to be happy and looking forward to hearing from you. Uh, so, uh, as little sort of duplication, or yeah, that's right, if they would get too many. Um, you know how you feel when you get a bunch of, of messages and emails. Um, I don't know, I'm sure all of us here today could probably say that, it was, is a high likelihood percentage rate that you have maybe a couple thousand emails in your inbox that you have enough. If you subscribe to marketing, which by the way, you guys, you are, you know, training right now to be successful internet marketers, to grow your young living businesses. And one of the better things that you can do is subscribe to online marketing to see what's out there, see what's working. Check out techniques, look at format and get inspiration, get ideas. And also figure out, okay, well, what do I not want to do? Because I don't like that, which is important too. All right. Uh, do you recommend email only on campaigns unless there are campaigns that you opt in with a keyword? So, um, strategically, um, I, hmm, you can duplicate your campaign and change it to text, right? So if you have an email only campaign and you want that to also be a textable campaign, then you have an email campaign that maybe has a landing page, right? And they're going to get all that information. And then you copy, duplicate the campaign like we showed earlier. Um, and then you just go into that campaign settings and change it to text only. And it's not going to show up exactly the same, but they'll still get that information. And then you just think about the times when you would use text versus, um, versus email, right? Because you're not necessarily, when, when you're interacting with someone face to face at a vendor event or at a networking event or in line at the grocery store, it's a lot easier to say, text this to this number and get this thing that I'm talking about. Uh, but when you're online, i- if it's in your email signature, if you're on social media, you know, or whatever, it's a lot easier to have a link that goes off to a landing page for people to opt in that way. So if, if you're using a campaign that's, you know, kind of general use, you know, if it's five steps to this outcome and, uh, you know, and it's applicable either way, then I would duplicate it and have different ways that you interact with people and then meet them where they are based on, uh, on that setting. So, you know, have the campaign ready so that when you're in the grocery line and you're like, hey, that, you know, I've, I've got a way better solution for your laundry, text this to this and you'll get it. Um, as opposed to saying, okay, now go to this website and then fill this out and then you'll get this via email. I hope that makes sense. So just think about, uh, the application, uh, for these. Perfect. All right. Uh, we are five past the hour and I want to thank you guys for your participation today. I want to thank you all for, uh, who were not able to join us live today, uh, for submitting your questions ahead of time. Then we'll always do our best to cover those where we can. And, uh, we hope to see all of you on future work sessions and, uh, we will see you next week.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great weekend.